Good evening and welcome to the January 28, 2025, meeting of the Greensboro City Council. We are in the K D Dorset Council Chamber. Let the record reflect that all council members are in attendance. We will begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Thur, could you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do need a quick housekeeping item. We have a meeting scheduled for August 5th, which is the night of National Night Out, no, August 5th, which is the National Night Out. We need to move August 5th to August 4th. Do I have a motion moved by Mr. Holston, seconded by Mayor Bertem? All in favor, say aye. Aye? That passes eight to zero. We do have two business items we need to take. I know that when we scheduled this meeting, it was specifically only to hear from the applicants to fill the seat vacancy. One thing that you learn if you're on city councils, you've got to be nimble and things change quickly. Last week's regular meeting, we did remotely because of the snow. There was a bond issue that our bond counsel and our assistant city manager Larry Davis felt that it was a vote that we needed to take in person. So, we got the presentation at our last meeting. We are going to do the vote this meeting. Let me read them into the record. Item D1 is a resolution providing for the sale and issuance not to exceed $48 million nine hundred thousand dollars, City of Greensboro, North Carolina, general obligation, public improvement and refunding bonds, Series 2025. And D2, a resolution providing for the sale and issuance of $10 million, City of Greensboro, North Carolina, taxable general obligation housing bonds, Series 2025A. I do believe we have a speaker on the item. Madam Clerk, we do have one speaker on the item?
Yes, ma'am. I believe Mr. George Hartsman.
Mr. Hartsman, you will be given three minutes.
Thank you. Except for 2020, there were more job cuts in 2024 than in any year since 2009. Today, it was reported that the White House Budget Office ordered a pause to all grants and loans dispersed by the federal government and is causing pandemonium. We are threatening other governments with massive tariffs. This bond directly translates to increased property taxes. So, the Federal Reserve has lowered interest rates. And usually when that happens, interest rates that are tied to a 30-year mortgage or debt like this, the interest rates go down. But for the first time in about forever, what happened to long-term rates is that they went up. And the Fed cut again, and long-term interest rates went up even more. That's the price of a dozen eggs. It's going through the roof. U.S. credit card loan defaults are jumping.
Mr. Hartsman, I'm going to have to interrupt you.
Can you stop the clock?
We are having trouble with GTN, and we need to pause the meeting because we've got to make sure that the live stream is up. So, we'll call you back. It should only be a few minutes.
Okay.
So, everybody can relax and chat for the next few minutes. So, the feed has been restored. We will give Mr. Hartsman an additional 30 seconds. Mr. Hartsman, please continue.
Oh, it's on there? This is the office real estate delinquency rate. And it's above where it hit at the top in 2011, 2012. That's the stock market compared to GDP. It's higher than it was in 2000 before the financial panic of 2008 and 2021, when everybody's earnings got whacked. Now is not the time to build a boardwalk deck around Country Park Lake. In a volatile economic environment, taking on significant municipal debt represents an unnecessary and potential reckless financial risk. On the $2 million, the $10 million bond, I am for it. I'm for spending the money. Responsible fiscal management demands we explore alternative pay-as-you-go funding mechanisms, though, that don't burden taxpayers with long-term debt. Why not use some of the $586 million in the City of Greensboro slush fund instead of borrowing the money at relatively high interest rates?
On item D1. Moved by Mrs. Hoffman, seconded by Mrs. Hightower. Counsel, please vote. Councilmember Hoffman. And that passes eight to zero. I need a motion for D2. Moved by Dr. Wells, seconded by Mrs. Hightower. Counsel, please vote. And that passes eight to zero. We now move on to the consideration of at-large candidates. And, you know, let me say that while we're having a discussion, no one can replace Yvonne Johnson. This is not a vote to replace her. It is a vote to fill a vacancy. We do have 19 people to sign up. There were originally 44. Five of those people did not live in the city. Five other people were not registered voters. And the balance had horrendous voting records. They had not voted in the last five municipal elections. And so, we kind of disqualified those. So, we were left with, we were left with 20, and we had one withdraw today. So, we're down to 19. I had sent the applicants a number of emails, and one was an overview of what an at-large representative does. And it is a very detailed list, and it probably wasn't complete. But being an at-large candidate, being, being an at-large representative, a district representative, mayor, is extremely time-consuming. It is considered a part-time job, but I can tell you, it is a full-time job. The state of North Carolina does not allow any city councils to be full-time. We are part-time based on the legislature. A lot of people think that we go to two meetings a month, the two meetings that you see on TV. And I can tell you, we have meetings just about every single day, whether it's with constituents, business owners, city staff, each other. So, I would encourage the people who are going to be talking to us this evening, really to, really consider that you have the time, that you will be able to do this. I did send out an email that outlined how tonight was going to go, that each speaker would get three minutes. The microphones will be muted at the end of three minutes. We also stated, I stated in the memo, that we have a council retreat scheduled for February 12th and 13th, and that you must attend that council meeting. So, if you're here and you want to speak, and you didn't read the memo, and you can't be here on the 12th and 13th, then you will not be under consideration. So, make sure, before you get up and speak, that you will be able to come to the council retreat. That is extremely important, probably most important, to whoever the new council member I did send out a memo. I gave some instructions about how this meeting was going to be handled, and only four people responded, or five people responded the correct way. Emails that we get are important. It's important that they're read and they're acted on. That's another thing I want people to understand, that not only is it meetings, it is emails, it is phone calls, it is a lot of work. I think it is the best job in the City of Greensboro. I have loved every day, even the bad days. So, we will start with, we will start with...
Madam Mayor, may I speak?
Yes.
Would you mind? I would like for us to be able to recess after we hear from all 19. This is a lot of information to process. And to do it and be very considerate and respectful of the people who have taken the time to apply, sent their information in, they're going to make their presentations. That is really, to be honest, quite a lot of information to be able to process in a timely manner. And so, therefore, I would like for us, after we hear from all of our applicants, and I know that they're all good applicants, and I think they all deserve their three minutes, for us to hear, but for us to also be able to process what we've heard, we've read the resumes. It's a lot of information because there's a lot of interest in the vacancy. And I would like for us to consider that we recess after we've heard and then reconvene on Friday to come back, to make that appointment, so that that individual is able to move forward as of February 4th.
So, and I believe you are proposing 2:00 on Friday.
On Friday.
So, the motion is that at the end of the speakers and at the end of our question-and-answer session, that we recess the meeting and that we will reconvene in the council chambers Friday at 2:00.
Second.
So, that was moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Mr. Holston. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And so, that passes eight to zero. I will say, there will be no speakers at that meeting. The person who is selected will be sworn in next Tuesday. If you can't come down here, you really don't have to. You can watch streaming because it will just be council deliberations. There will no, there will be no speakers, there will be no back and forth, no additional questions. So, you can come back to the council chambers anytime you want, but you can also watch it on live stream. So, we're going to start. We've got 19. I think the best way to do it is just to pull names out of a hat. Out of a cup, yes. All right. Our first speaker is Todd Turner. Our first speaker is Todd Turner. He will be followed by Portia Shipman. And again, you've got three minutes, and microphones will be muted after three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn and fellow council members. My name is Todd Turner. I'm a lifelong resident here in Greensboro, originally from south-central area. And I never intended to run for public office, so I haven't accumulated a lot of credentials over the years, but I've lived a very integrated life within my community in multifaceted ways. The first moment of service that I remember is when my father was athletic director at Dudley High School, and he had a baseball team with nowhere for that team to play, and that the program had been dormant. We went out with rake, shovels, and buckets, and built the baseball field by hand that is still used today on campus. I eventually became a touring musician, signed to Capitol Records, went all over the country, and went to every major demographic that you could imagine within this country, and always wanted to come home to Greensboro. I eventually dedicated time to causes like the Special Olympics in the state of North Carolina. But I think my greatest impact became when I became a photographer, a photojournalist, and a portrait photographer in the community. I was able to capture images that promoted the awareness and funding for autism, for racial injustice, and false incarcerations, with some of the greatest literary minds within our community, and public media figures that took me through their neighborhoods, of which they originated, and educated me on their upbringing. If a political figure came through the area, I was there, boots on the ground, capturing it. I also did work with HBCU communities to enable to promote them and ensure their continued growth. We shined a light on immigrant-owned restaurants and immigrant-owned businesses within the area. I was in the Coliseum the day that everything shut down at the ACC tournament for COVID, which prompted a citywide portrait project where the community could put their thoughts out to the rest of our city. Critical time, obviously, that we were in the teeth of. Gun violence rallies that I attended, where I heard the voices of the community and was present. I then went into education, where I became a professor at UNCG, as well as GTCC, where I impacted the life of so many graduates moving forward into the workforce. Now I work in real estate and have seen firsthand the housing crisis that we face due to lack of inventory and no affordable homes for so many in this community. And I stand before you today because of my undying love for this great city, and I'm here simply to listen, learn, and to serve, and hopefully honor the legacy of the great Yvonne Johnson.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Turner?
Thank you so much for your time.
After Portia Shipman, we have Joseph Williams. Mr. Williams, if you could go to the window side of the room.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn, council members, friends, neighbors, and esteemed residents of Greensboro. Thank you for the opportunity to share my vision, as I seek to honor the serving, honor of serving as your at-large representative on the Greensboro City Council. Greensboro isn't just where I live. It's where my heart, passion, and purpose are deeply rooted. I'm here committed to working tirelessly for our cities to strive for everyone. I am a proud, I am proud to be a black woman who was raised in Greensboro Public Housing, whose journey was profoundly shaped by my late mother, Gladys Falk Shipman, a civil rights icon who took part in the World War's protests, providing financial contributions to the Greensboro International Civil Rights Museum, becoming the first woman vice president of the Nerf Carolina NAACP, and twice president of Greensboro's, of the Greensboro chapter. She broke barriers while, while advocating for systemic change. Together, we founded Nerf Carolina's largest minority-owned home care agency. Today, I am continuing her legacy through our good, through my Good Times Home Healthcare, and now non-emergency medical transportation services, proving it's never too late to make a difference. For thirteen years, I worked alongside the late Mayor Pro Tem Yvonne Johnson, advocating for transformative initiatives like, like Gifford County Family Justice Center, and the Greensboro PD Family Victims Unit, addressing issues of domestic violence and youth crime. Through these experiences, I have learned the power of courage, fairness, and common-sense values to bring real change to our city. As a representative, I will focus on five key points. Equity in housing, education, and healthcare, ensuring that everyone has fair access to the resources they need to succeed. Economic growth, supporting small businesses and creating good-paying jobs to strengthen our economy. Public safety, fostering trust and collaboration between law enforcement and our community leaders. Social justice, breaking down barriers to, of opportunity and success for all the city's residents. And of course, domestic violence prevention, advocating for education, awareness, and resources to protect our community from senseless tragedies.
Thank you.
This is more than just a seat at the table.
Thank you.
God bless Greensboro.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Shipman?
I do have, I do have one. One question. I just wanted you to repeat the five things you said.
Sure.
Trying to write them as you-
I gave everybody a copy of everything, because I was figuring that I may talk slowly, so you guys have a copy of my speech.
Yeah, well, see, that's, this is one of the reasons I want to be able to process what I'm hearing, because we're getting-
So this was just handed out this evening?
Right. This is coming here last minute. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all so much.
After Mr. Joseph Williams, we have Akir Khan. If you could go to the window side of the room. And Mr. Williams was one of the five people who responded correctly.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Joseph Williams. Oh, thank you. I worked in commercial shipping for about forty years, and I retired about five years And I feel Greensboro is a tremendous city, and I'm happy to be here. I would like to say to the leaders who have guided Greensboro's past, present, and future, thank you. We all know, leadership carries its own weight. Our city has impressive traffic management twenty-four hours a day. Because I was in transportation, I kind of know that. In our state, cities with more national exposure, moving traffic as Greensboro does, would be unrealistic to implement or even achieve. Our parks' availability of all our citizens is to be admired. We remain attractive to business and a wish city for potential new residents. I am here in hopes of supporting city leadership and securing Greensboro's continued development. I would be remiss not to thank Yvonne Johnson for all she has done for our community. Thanks for allowing me a portion of your time. And I'd just like to say, in Yvonne Johnson's name, if anybody in that family, if y'all want to consider anybody in that family, I'm behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any questions or comments for Mr. Williams? Thank you, sir. After Mr. Khan, we have Irish Good. Ms. Good, if you could move to the window side of the room.
Good evening, friends. First, let me thank city council for your leadership and time in the community. I've seen you all at our community events. My name is Akir Khan. I'm the chair of the Out of the Garden Project, also a lifelong resident in Greensboro. I was born about a mile down the road here, so this is home for me, and so I'm happy to apply for a position for city council at large, and looking forward to talking about my background. As I mentioned, I was born and raised in Greensboro. My family is here today, my father is here, my mom, my beautiful wife, Zara, and my two children. I also got some students in the room. When I walked in today, I actually met one of my students who's running for office, so I thought, he gave me a big hug and said, hey, remember you helped me at Guilford Tech? I said, I do remember you. And so he's actually running here for office today. So it shows that you never know the impact you have in this community. And so my dad arrived in nineteen sixty-eight. Imagine arriving in nineteen sixty-eight from Wisconsin, and he came here to Greensboro, and he loved it. He was a professor at ANT State University. While he was there, he had to make some tough decisions, decisions in the South that should not be made for anybody. There were bathrooms that were colored and bathrooms that were white. And him being a man that was born in India, raised in Pakistan, it's kind of hard to understand, you know, what bathroom to use if it's white-colored, or white, or, or brown, as we are. And so my dad had tough decisions in sixty-eight. But if you look around us, we've come so far as a community, so far as a city, and I'm so thankful for that. My dad also became best friends with Equestria Craig, Dean Craig, one of the legends at ANT State University. My dad taught in the School of Business and Economics for thirty-five years, but Dr. Craig came about four years later, and so he was my dad's little brother, and he was phenomenal. So I'm always grateful for him. I went to Summerfield Elementary, I went to Laughlin Elementary, Northwest and Dudley. I've seen the different sides of Greensboro as an at-large applicant. You know, Greensboro is really a great place. It's my home, but there are definitely two sides of Greensboro. John Edwards several years ago talked about those two Americas, and I've seen those two Americas, and that's why I'm chair of the Out of the Garden Project, to make sure all of Greensboro is fed. But that's my background. And then, of course, I was lucky enough to finish under Dr. Nito Cobain at High Point University, one of my mentors and friends, and I finished the school education, and so there's a picture of me and my family there, so very proud of my High Point University time. What, who am I in the community? So in the community, it's very important for me to say, serve as a chair of the Out of the Garden Project. We do about thirty thousand pounds a week of food, thirty thousand pounds, and so about four to five mobile markets, that we make sure that Greensboro is fed all around. I've also been in any town with NCCJ, I'm a board there. I received a game-changer award with the Community Foundation, but this is my schedule for this week for food distributions. I'll be at the warehouse with my team of volunteers on the thirtieth, we'll be at Hope Chapel on the first, and then on the first again at North Park. And so this is who we are, and this is who I am as a, as a community member. Here are some places I've worked at, you know, Guilford Tech, High Point University, UNCG, everybody remembers the great work of Mackey McDonald, at VF Corporation. I saw him at an event recently and he gave me a big hug. I was his intern, I was the guy that hands to the help desk, tickets for Mackey, so glad to be part of VF Corporation, CCL. I mentioned Guilford Tech, Moses Cone, but this is my home.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions for Mr. Khan? Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you, Madam.
After Irish Good, who also responded correctly, is Tiffany Luard. Tiffany, if you would come to the right-hand side of the room?
Yes. I've seen you pop it up many a time. Irish Good? Making our city better, a greater Greensboro. Introducing myself. Good evening, everyone. My name is Irish Good, and I'm honored to stand before you today as a candidate for the at-large position on the Greensboro City Council. A little bit about me, I've lived in Greensboro most of my life, I raised my children here, I retired from the city of Greensboro. I have a BS degree in industrial and organizational psychology, and I have a master's in business administration. I've lived on the northeast side of Greensboro for nearly forty years. I've seen that area, and many areas around Greensboro, evolve over time. As a lifelong resident of our community, I have witnessed firsthand the incredible potential we have when we come together to address our challenges and celebrate our successes. My purpose and my passion is service to others, building and nurturing deep connections with family, friends, and community, emphasizing care, support, and shared experiences. My experience, I have worked thirty-five years in public service, twenty-two years with the Greensboro Fire Department, and thirteen years with the City of Greensboro People and Culture Department. I've, I've been a business owner. I owned a recruitment firm that focused solely on recruitment for public safety. I'm a lifelong learner. I value the opportunity for personal and professional development. I'm a transformational leader. I inspire and motivate others to create meaningful change. I'm an organizational coach. I help teams and organizations reach their goals. Understanding community needs, I believe in the power of a united community, where every voice is heard and valued. My journey has taught me that it's not just about policies, it's about people. It's about our families, our neighbors, our children, and ensuring that they feel safe, supported, and inspired to thrive. I have a vision of what the future of Greensboro could be, and it's one that's vibrant, inclusive, a connected city, where there's engagement, equitable opportunities, sustainable environment, social equity, and economic growth, where all residents strive. The city is facing some key issues, and I've lifted up three here with some potential solutions, and that's homelessness, affordable housing, and policing and crime. So what's the plan of action? I want to work with fellow council members and members in the community to develop a comprehensive strategy to improve the quality of life for all residents. So let's call for action. Together, we can tackle-
Thank you. Any, any questions for Ms. Good? Comments?
Yes. Yes, I do. Thank you.
After Tiffany Luard, we have Crystal Black.
Tiffany Luard. Thank you to Mayor Vaughn and our dedicated council members for giving me the opportunity to speak to you in Greensboro today. My name is Tiffany Luard, and I have been a resident of Greensboro for decades. We stand at a crossroads of tremendous opportunity, with redevelopment, development, gentrification, technology advancement, and the ongoing growth of our community. It is tantamount that we take a chance to shape our future in a way that benefits us all. My extensive experience combined with successful local projects like the Happy Hill Community Special Projects and Development, the I Didn't Know Maybe Didn't Neither Podcast, and my work with creative agencies, commissioners, and the historic preservation societies demonstrate my ability to connect to Greensboro's talent with national opportunity. Aiming to do this while building sustainable local economic impact, I have created opportunities as well as supported and extended the opportunities with various networks nationally and locally for projects throughout the state. My professional experience has ranged, my impact and support of projects over the years with nonprofit campaigns for various delegates, and support of several domestic violence agencies, signatures, my consistency in the community, and beyond. I'm happy to be here for Greensboro as an ally, and I'm available to help. With multiple decades as a resident and as an ally, I have childhood memories, teenage memories, and adult memories. It is here that I became, evolved, and created a foundation. My unique combination of proven financial management, diverse community engagement, and successful project implementation provide unique value to the council. I bring both the visualization of my demographic and yet contained vision and skill sets beyond my youth. My goal is to advance Greensboro's opportunities and the practical experience to ensure successful execution. This is my home, my responsibility, and my opportunity to give back. I am vying for the vacant seat on the city council. I am committed to doing what's- I am committed to doing what's right for Greensboro and for the future we all deserve.
Now, I had to cheat because you guys cut it from five to three and it's really hard for me and I'm long-winded. But I wanted to say, I now manage Greensboro success stories like BDOT and work with amazing CEOs while continuing my career. I actively work with three and four different nonprofits actively throughout the state of North Carolina. I have worked in Durham, Charlotte, Winston and Greensboro locally as a worker as well as an employer. And I have been doing that for the last 20 years. So I'm sorry, I'm getting nervous. Yet and still, it's time for me to take a beat and help Greensboro.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? No questions or comments, thank you.
Yes, and you guys can see my presentation just like Ms. Portia. I know I was long-winded.
Crystal Black is one of the Fab Five who did it correctly. After Ms. Black, we'll hear from Nikki Smith.
Can you hear me? Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, esteemed community members and friends. I stand before you today with immense gratitude and excitement to be considered for the vacant city council seat. Together, we can embody the spirit of Greensboro Strong. As a lifelong resident of Greensboro, my journey has always been guided by a deep commitment to our city's growth and well-being. One of my proudest achievements was in 2018 when I helped establish the first relief center after the Greensboro tornado. Working alongside city leaders and dedicated partners, we rallied volunteers and gathered essential resources for those affected. This experience illuminated the power of community collaboration and strength. Serving on the Solid Waste Commission, now the Sustainability Commission, I initiated the Love Your Block program, fostering pride and engagement in our neighborhoods. My partnership with the City of Greensboro led to the development of STEM in My City and Career on Wheels. These programs have provided hundreds of students with firsthand experience alongside city professionals, equipping our future leaders with the necessary skills to thrive as Greensboro anticipate a significant economic growth. I also collaborated with our former police chief to establish the Take Me Home program and worked alongside community connectors on the Chief's 500 Jobs Program. Currently, I am engaged with the Greensboro Police Department and establishing safe cultures to develop programming to address violence through youth and sports. In 2020, I advocated for the establishment of the Ad-Hoc Committee on African-American Disparities, where I proudly serve as the committee chair. We collaborated with North Carolina A and T State University's Office of Leadership and Civic Engagement to connect students with local government. Our impactful environmental justice series has raised awareness about critical disparities and quality of life issues affecting our communities. As the founder and chair of the Southeast Greensboro Coalition, I have been dedicated to advocating for the health and vitality of our South and Southeast neighborhoods and for policy-driven solutions that support residents throughout our city. Together with the Greensboro Police Department, we developed a community policing plan that emphasizes resident safety and builds trust within our neighborhoods. Our coalition has reached significant milestones by engaging in regular meetings with the City Manager's Office and other department leaders, advocating for essential zoning policy changes, securing upgrades to recreational facilities and pushing for the current Phase Two Randallman Road Area Plan and South Area Plan. As I seek the honor of serving in the vacant city council seat, I ask you for your support. I am eager to listen, advocate and work diligently for you in our shared vision of making Greensboro Strong. Thank you for your trust and your time.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Ms. Black? Thank you. After Mr. Smith, we will have Anthony Pace. Mr. Smith has given us a handout.
Let me start. If these walls could talk, what would they say? They would echo the voices of citizens like myself, sharing their hopes, their dreams and their concerns for our city. The walls would tell stories of collaboration, determination and dedication, making Greensboro stronger and a vibrant community. They would speak to decisions that shape the community and better moments for unity and leadership that inspire progress. I ask each of you council members, pause for a moment and look at the walls around us. Can you hear them speaking to you and the decisions you've made? History will be made tonight. Our community believes in you and together we can lead Greensboro into a brighter future. Good evening, Mayor Vaughn and council members. I am here to ask your trust in this appointment. It's not just about filling a vacancy, it's about choosing a proven community leader that continues to guide Greensboro towards responsible growth that benefits all. Many of you know me as a successful business owner. For 45 years of leadership and experience in technology and telecommunications, I have built businesses, I've created jobs, I've driven innovation. I am now ready to dedicate my time and dedicate to serving the community that has given so much to my family. Greensboro is a proud, has a proud history. It is resilient, it is reinvention. From textiles to aerospace, we are a city of opportunity and I want to help ensure our growth is innovative. My top priority is public safety. The safety of our, is a safe city is the foundation to everything. Attracting businesses, strengthening neighbors and fostering trust. I will work with the city council to invest and hire experienced officers to ensure every family feels secure in our community. I have a proven record of community leadership. As a leader of the Preserve Friendly Avenue, I worked with over 1,500 residents and city leaders to protect our neighbors and secure an NCO. This experience reinforced my belief that leadership is about listening, about collaboration and results. This decision is critical for Greensboro's future. We need forward-thinking leaders who embrace change and guide our city to its full potential. While tonight's focus is on this appointment, my commitment is long-term. Greensboro is on the rise and together we can make it even a better place to live, work and raise a family. I would be honored to help share Greensboro's future with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for Mr. Smith?
Any questions?
Mrs. Hoffman?
I just have some comments, Mayor. Mr. Smith, you've written extensively about your ideas for the city and they're easily found online and in your YouTube videos.
I can't hear you. Can you speak? I can barely hear you.
Can everybody hear me?
Okay, I'll work a little harder, I'm sorry.
All right. I said, you know, you have, you have written extensively online and through your YouTube videos in terms of sharing some of your ideas about the city. Some of them concern me and I just wanted to comment on a couple of those this evening. You know, you mentioned the Friendly Avenue Neighborhood Group. You know, your YouTube video seems to present you as really the leader of that group. But, you know, my feeling is that there was a very strong dedicated group of leaders who led that process through the rezoning effort and then through the overlay effort. So it seems to me that acknowledging this as a collaborative effort rather than claiming, you know, much of the credit perhaps for yourself, might be the right thing to do. You know, I've said several times from this dais that city council is a team sport. It's not an individual sport. You know, one of the other things that's disturbing to me is that you've called for a moratorium on annexation in the city. I want to point out that annexation is the most important tool that we have to grow this city and to meet our housing needs over the next decade and to grow our residential tax base. I don't know whether you've read it or not, but a recent study commissioned by the Greensboro Regional Realtors Association indicates that the increase in jobs in Greensboro and our larger region is creating an unprecedented demand for housing. It's estimated that we need 32,000 plus new residential units in this greater city county over the next five years. And that's both single-family and multifamily. And this includes housing at all price points. Now, to put that in perspective, we approved permits for 1,500 units last year. So it's clear to me that we need to be aggressive and supportive in seeking new development and approving bigger, denser, well-designed projects that integrate into their environment. And that requires acreage. So this will necessitate annexation, which you call for a moratorium on. Infield development, like the project that you were involved with on Friendly Avenue, while important, doesn't substantially increase our housing inventory. Now, one of the other things that is concerning to me is your suggestion that the First Horizon Coliseum be used to house our homeless population. While I believe council has done, made considerable progress in housing and I think we'll announce a couple of housing items in the next couple of months. But we still have much to do. But, you know, your suggestion to me sort of indicates a lack of understanding of the Coliseum as an economic driver and the difficulty of doing what you proposed with the sheer number of events that we, that we have weekly at the Coliseum. I also think it's a rather simplistic view of how to deal with homelessness. The Coliseum generates millions of dollars annually in economic impact dollars into this community. And with OVG, our new management partner, we expect to maximize our return on investment from both the Coliseum complex and the Tanger Center. So you're suggesting that we take the Coliseum, which is a billion-dollar asset and a revenue generating asset and turn that into a shelter. And I just find that sort of astounding. And finally, and perhaps most important, is your voting record. You have voted in only two of the last five city council elections. You did not vote in 2013 or 2015 or 2017. Now, I feel that voting is a privilege, but it is our most fundamental civic responsibility. I wonder, as a businessman, if you would hire or retain an employee who showed up only 40% of the time? That's what, that's what your voting record indicates. So, you know, I think as members of council, we are looking for people to be thoughtful and deliberative and well-informed and respectful and collaborative and ethical, who understand the needs of this city and all of our neighborhoods. But we want somebody who shows up 100% of the time, not 40%. Thank you, Mayor.
May I address your questions?
That is not a question, those are just comments. I'm sorry, they don't require any retort.
No, if you call out, we're going to have you removed.
If there's, if there's some clarification, I feel like I should be just to answer some of the concerns you've expressed.
Briefly, I mean, we're not going to, but I have one.
I'll be very brief.
I'm going to speak first because I don't want it to appear that there's piling on. But there is something that I actually was involved with firsthand and it goes back to COVID. And, you know, we had a mask mandate, some people liked it, some people didn't like it. We did the best we could with the information that we had at the time. And we got a number of complaints from your business. I used to work in the Guilford Building. I know a lot of the people in the Guilford Building. That not only would you not wear masks in public spaces, you could do what you want in your own offices, you wouldn't wear them in elevators either and that you would fake cough. I believe that, that one of the TV stations did a spot about it because it was kind of the most egregious response that we had. And of course, you denied it all. There was also a photo shoot that was done in one of the hallways, which was against COVID at the time. Granted, we could have done COVID differently with information we have now. But information that we had then, that was the ordinance. We lost over 1,000 people in Guilford County due to COVID. And I feel that if we're going to be a leader, that we have to obey what the ordinance is. And to not honor people's concerns. The calls that we got, the complaints were from fellow people in that building. For you not to respect their concerns, their fears, to me is a big problem.
May I answer?
Well, you denied it all, but I do, I do know that based on the people that I knew from that building, the number of complaints that we got, there was something going on. And certainly you have made your thoughts clear about how COVID was handled. So I have no reason to disbelieve.
Are you answering, are you asking me to answer that?
No, we're not actually asking you to answer anything. We are just telling you what our concerns are. If you want to do a brief, a brief response, please do so, but make it brief. You had three minutes to give your case.
Right now? Or already? Okay, no more? Okay.
No, no, I mean, respond now.
Oh, I will, I'd be more than happy to. So I'm going to take your question first because I rarely visit my office downtown. I go there about one day a week. I allowed my employees to make their decision when they were in their confined office space. And honestly, I did not have a lot of control of when they left the office space to go to the elevator or out at the outdoors. So I have eight people who work downtown who did qualify under the essential employee mandate because we were a telephone company and we had to go onsite to do work. But we did wear masks, we went onsite to customers. But in the office confinement, our employees kept the doors closed and they did what they want to do. Now, we'll tell you, one of the eight employees did wear his mask in the office. The others chose not to, but in that confined office.
The complaint was in the hallways, elevators and lobby.
Yeah. And I was not aware, I mean, yes, I was aware that there was complaints that when they left the office space. But we are the only occupant or were the only occupant of that floor. There's only one other tenant on that floor.
If you want to address, and then we have to move on, we have other speakers.
Can I? Mr. and Ms. Hoffman, may I answer any of your questions?
I really think we're taking time away from other candidates.
I respect that, you're right, you are. Well, I thank you, I thank you very much for the opportunity.
And you can always send us an email.
Okay, thank you very much. Y'all have a wonderful evening. I will be here. I look forward to serving you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Madam Mayor, I, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I just have one quick comment. You went through everybody's voting record, which I think is very critical to people being engaged in the actual democratic process. But I don't know if people realize, we vote up here to get stuff done. So if you're opposed to voting for your own benefit, how are you going to vote for the whole city? And that is something that concerns me because that is a critical part of what we do. We can't move without at least five members who vote for whatever that is, whether you want it or don't want it. I may say no, Tammy may say yes, she got five to say yes, it goes forward. So it's kind of disturbing to me as a person who's voted since 19... So it's kind of disturbing to me as a person who's voted since nineteen eighty nineteen seventy-seven, to be honest with you, because it was talked about in my whole household. So I've done that. So I understand sometime people move from city to city or change areas, and sometime you may skip one, but I just think voting is something that, for me, is a critical element of what we're looking at. And so if you're kind of opposed to that, how would it affect us working together up here? That's all I just want to say.
Can I have fifteen seconds?
I just want, no.
We're good.
No.
I mean, the the record is the record.
That is a statement of how I'm seeing things, not necessarily at you.
Yeah.
It is just what we've done and our part of our due diligence, and we have a lot of due diligence to do.
Yeah. Can I have ten seconds?
Thank you.
So Mr. Mr. Pace will be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Pace is our next speaker. He has given us a handout. He was part of the Fab Five. After Mr. Pace, we will have Vernon Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn and Greensboro City Council and the citizens of Greensboro. As you know, my name is Anthony Pace. I was born and raised here in southeast Greensboro in a quiet, dead-end block of Stevens Street. And it was a great place to grow up because I had two of the first black cops that lived on my street, had two school principals, and a couple of people who were actually in the Navy Band that was created in Chapel Hill back in the day. And that said, is Greensboro is a great place to be, and you really don't appreciate how great Greensboro is until you move away and have to defend Greensboro to people who don't understand North Carolina or Greensboro. I attended Smith High School and graduated. Speaking of the voting, I was one of the first eighteen-year-olds to get to vote and have voted every chance I could, except for when military kept me away. I am a teacher by trade. I'm used to working with the youth. I'm used to working in collaborative efforts, and my thing for Greensboro is good controlled growth. The growth city has grown a lot from when I left here in nineteen eighty-three to join the military, and there's a lot of good things that happened since I've come back in two thousand eighteen. I went to one of the police community meetings a couple of weeks ago, and one of the things that was pointed out was it's time to get off the sideline. And the people that know me, I told them I would never run for office. However, in the Navy, we had this thing said that Navy stands for never again volunteer yourself. However, I am volunteering because I think my experiences with people, my experiences in the military, experiences in the Washington DC area for thirty years, talk about political, even school buses up there are political. So I have a broad experience. I believe in collaborative effort. I believe in finding, when we all agree, finding a good compromise that we all can live with. Greensboro is a great city, as I said before. Does it have problems? Sure. We wouldn't have a job, you wouldn't have a job if they didn't. But if we work together and appreciate the fact that Greensboro is great, you don't want it to be Charlotte, I know that. You don't want it to be Raleigh, I know that too. But Greensboro has a lot to offer. That's why all these businesses are moving here. That's why I love when I run into somebody from the DC area and see them and ask them how you like it. They tell me, I didn't know it was this good down here. I'm not going back. And that says something.
After Vernon Johnson, we have Christopher Terrell Dungy.
To the esteemed council members, good evening. My name is Vernon Johnson. I'm a lifelong member of Greensboro. I come to you this evening with a heart full of anguish as I remember the names of Shaquem Peterson Brock, Darius Knight Anderson, Darius Guzby, El Tamir Harum, Conrado Guillermo, and Zion Clinton, all victims of unwanted and unnecessary violence in this city in two thousand twenty-five. I often say a silent prayer for all of them, but I also come to this chamber with a heart ready for service. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. waxed poetically, everyone can be great because everyone can serve. I am here because I have the time and passion to serve. I'm going to say that again. I am here because I have the time and passion to serve. Make no mistake, I have a familiar surname, compatible DNA, and similar looks to our departed and cherished former mayor Pro Tem, but I'm here on my own accord. No one twisted my arm or coerced me to stand here today. God has ordered my steps. I simply say I have the capacity to serve the citizens of Greensboro. I know that I can represent all of Greensboro, not just some sections or certain groups. I will let my life full of service speak. I've dedicated the better part of my professional career to the service of children, building generational relationships throughout this city. I've served my country faithfully in the United States Navy, and I've served the city of Greensboro for over thirty years, working in different aspects of the Parks and Recreation Department. This city needs a person who doesn't just want to lead, but succeed, someone who wants to make Greensboro the most economically and culturally successful city in the southeast region. I want to increase affordable housing. I want to capitalize on rezoning and annexation opportunities so that Greensboro can grow its tax base. I want to promote jobs that provide livable wages. I want to work with the community and its partners to keep citizens and its protectors safe from unwanted violence. Lastly, with my background, working with younger populations, I know I can be that bridge to connect the younger generations to what the city of Greensboro is trying to accomplish in the days to come. Ladies and gentlemen, these are not unique ideas, but they're essential in making Greensboro a place where people want to live and raise their children. I was lucky to have two parents who instilled in me the desire to serve, for you see, someone out there needs me to be their voice today. Thank you so much.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Johnson?
Thank you again.
Thank you. After Mr. Dungy, we have Melvin Manuel or Manuel.
All right, council, I love that energy you brought with Nikki, putting people in their place. I want us to bring more of that in two thousand twenty-five. So my name is Terrell Dungy. I'm a community organizer. Greensboro has always been the jewel of my eye. It's where me and my now-husband Ryan met and have been building our lives together. It's where I got to pursue my love of psychology and get a degree at UNCG. I've even taken part in Greensboro's oldest tradition of resisting through marriage equality protests, police brutality, and housing inequality. I'm invested in the success of Greensboro, not just the development and its economic growth, but the success of the people that are the heart of this city, everyday working class folks that are being preyed on by the rental investor system. Last year, we saw over forty thousand homes being cost burdened when due to renting in our communities, and another sixteen thousand still facing evictions here in the two thousand twenty-four. This impact of struggling to make ends meet to stay in your home doesn't affect the individual solely, but also our community as well. When you're too busy working two or three jobs to pay your rent, it's hard to get to know your neighbor. It's hard to invest in your communities when you don't know if you'll be able to stay when it's time to renew your lease. If we want to truly reduce our crime rate in the city, we really need to get more proactive about our housing crisis. It allow if allowed to serve, I want to explore more about the rental experience and see more what we can do as a city to curb the impact of our housing market. I will work with the city staff and commissions to create Tenet Task Force, working to develop reports to the tenant experience in Greensboro and help explore policy that protect tenants from predatory investors and their practices. I would also want to see the city of Greensboro grow in its community engagement. I originally proposed a review of the twenty G S O two thousand forty plan. However, after seeing the current presidential administration gutting so many protections and fundings for minority communities, this might be a perfect time for us instead to make an effort to connect people in communities to the resources they need right now to be safe and understand this moment in time that we're in. I want to see how the city can live into those values as a sanctuary city in this moment to stand in the gap for queer, trans, black, and undocumented folks being persecuted by the Trump administration. So, yeah, let's make history, two thousand twenty-five together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Dungy? Thank you. After Mr. Manuel, we have Irving Allen.
My name is Melvin Manuel, and I am a Greensboro native. I've traveled extensively in the United States with some international travel as well, and I can emphatically state there is not a better place to live than Greensboro, North Carolina. I have a degree in economics, and I worked forty-six years for Dun &amp; Bradstreet. As I stated in my application, if y'all have that there, I'm a liberal concerning humanitarian issues and a conservative concerning fiscal responsibility. I believe my background and experiences would be helpful to the city and the city council in threading that difficult and delicate needle. I've always admired Mrs. Mrs. Johnson and her lifelong service to the city of Greensboro. If selected, it would be my honor to serve her remaining term. I am retired and have the flexibility to meet the requirements of serving on the city council as outlined in Mayor Vaughn's twenty January twenty-first email. Thank you.
Thank you. Any any questions for Mr. Manuel comments? Thank you. After Mr. Allen, we have Jamila Pender, and Mr. Allen was also part of the Fab Five, who answered correctly.
Good evening, esteemed council. My name is Irving David Allen. I'm a lifelong resident of Greensboro, North Carolina. Bit of a full-circle moment. My first time at city council was when I was in tenth grade at Dudley High School. I was in AP US Government, and Christopher Goins, who was my teacher at the time, brought us to address the council. And so we spoke to this body about the concerns that high school students had about what was going on in the city of Greensboro. And since that day, really before that day, I've committed my life to service in the city of Greensboro. I'm a community organizer by trade and a project manager, and I've spent my entire adult life working for the issues that citizens concerned about, not citizens from one side of town or the other, but citizens who saw what was going on in their community and felt the need to get engaged and involved. So we've advocated together, we've worked together, we've brought people together to build community, and that's what I'm looking to do on a citywide level. So I'm asking for your blessing and for your trust to continue the work that we've done together. I've worked with the majority of you on different community projects and city projects. From the first project that I worked on was the Teens Downtown Initiative, when the curfew was set into place around two thousand thirteen. And we worked together to ensure that young people got home safely during the curfew, but we also came together and brought private business, the public sector, and nonprofits together to build safe spaces for those young individuals. We've also worked together on police accountability. We've worked together on participatory budgeting. We've done very good things in the city of Greensboro, and we've been successful together, and I'd like to be able to continue that work with you and to address the issues that that folks have, because I don't think that it's only about the things that we want to see changed in Greensboro, but also what do we care about and what do we want to preserve as our culture? So we want to build that narrative, and that is what will draw people to our city. That is what will keep young people in our city and help us to take advantage of these young professionals that we've worked and built with and helped to nurture. So we want to keep the things that we love and the things that we care about, and we do have some things that need to change, but we can change those things together. If we come together, collaborate, and struggle through the tough times as we have done before, then we can see the change that we want to see, and we can bring that light to Greensboro and continue to have it shine. So I thank you for your time, your commitment, and especially to this process, because I know it hasn't been easy, and we've got a lot of great candidates that we've been hearing from tonight. So I'm just asking for you to give me the opportunity to continue our work together so that we can move forward as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any questions? Any questions or comments from Mr. Allen? Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamila Pender, and Jamila gave us a handout. After Ms. Pender, we will have Michael McKinney.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Jamila Pender. My apologies, can you hear me now? Thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak before you this evening. My name is Jamila Pender, and if you don't, many of you who may know me, and if you do not know me, I am definitely a passionate, I am passionate about making our city a great place, and that's evident in how I continue to show up each and every day for the citizens of our community. I grew up in Greensboro. I went to school here in Greensboro, and I raised a healthy, productive, adult son who also went to school here in Greensboro. Many of you may not know, but I am, I say my superpower is building relationships deeply. But may one thing you may not know about me is that I'm a data geek. I love some good data. And so pairing that data with the relationships, I like to use that discovery and develop opportunities to create healthier and more thriving communities. As you can see on the handout that I gave you, one of the things I'm most proudest of that really spearheaded me into going deeper and working with and for and alongside community is a picture of mobility. Mobility and how we move in and out throughout the city is crucial. It's crucial with promoting economic opportunities. It's crucial with being, it's important in regards to access to a quality of life. It's also helpful when we talk about building connections, and it all starts with mobility. And I believe I have a proven track record demonstrating timing out and working with and for community to be able to look at opportunities for economic opportunities, looking at ways of how connectedness amongst communities and neighborhoods, but most importantly, convening and bringing people together with differing opinions and different viewpoints and different experiences. And hopefully, with this opportunity, if given this opportunity, I would love to be able to work alongside each and every one of you all, as you have already worked and put policies and practices in place to be able to help Greensboro thrive, but also me coming with my skill sets, and most importantly, the commitment and the love that I have for the city to help make Greensboro a healthier, nourishing community for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Pender? Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. After Mr. McKinney, we will have George Hartzman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, esteemed council members. My name is Michael McKinney, CEO of Piedmont Business Capital. I'm here to express my strong interest in the at-large city council seat. My thirty years of diverse experience have prepared me to serve Greensboro effectively during this exciting period of economic growth. My career has been defined by leadership, community engagement, and results. At PBC, I've managed multimillion-dollar budgets and built strong community partnerships. As former Executive Director of NC Realtors Housing Foundation, I've successfully raised significant funds for affordable housing initiatives. These roles and others demonstrate my ability to drive impactful changes. My work is more than just numbers and strategies. I'm deeply committed to our community. My service on various boards and commission My service on various boards and commission, including Gifford County Planning Board, the Governor-appointed State License and Board of Opticians, Greensboro Minimum, Greensboro Standard Housing Commission, Vice Chair of War Memorial Commission, and former Vice Chair of High Point Housing Authority have provided me valuable insight into the needs of our residents. My service as a National Board Member of the One Hundred Black Men of America, a mentoring organization for at-risk youth. My work on the national campaign to raise the initial twenty million dollars for the Civil Rights Museum and Center demonstrate my belief in the power of collective actions. Greensboro is experiencing tremendous growth with the arrival of Toyota Battery Plant, Boom Super Sonic, Honda Jet, and other ancillary businesses. The growth presents incredible opportunities and significant challenges. We need strategic collaborative leadership to ensure necessary infrastructure, workforce, housing, and safety measures in place for all of our citizens. My experience in both private and public sector has prepared me to bridge the gap between business, government, and community, to negotiate effectively, advocate for our city, and implement policies that address these challenges while ensuring that no one is left behind. My financial background in banking and underwriting directly translate into managing municipal budgets. I've consistently champion initiatives to expand access to economic opportunity, working with minority entrepreneurs, and managing workforce development programs. My leadership in overseeing disaster relief and down payment assistance programs demonstrate a deep understanding of our diverse housing needs. My experience in managing staff, developing policies, and collaborating with diverse stakeholders has instilled in me the importance of safe and thriving communities. In the outlook, I envision a Greensboro capitalizing on opportunities like developing PTI into a major airport hub with more direct flights. This will bring significant economic benefit, increase business travel, job creation, and a boost to tourism, and enhance economic development overall. We should also explore the potential of bringing a Major League Baseball team to our city. I'm driven by creating lasting impact, building systems, structures, and relationships that serve future generations to come. Greensboro has the potential to be at the heart of this region's transformation, and I'm ready to dedicate my leadership and experience to making that happen. Thank you for your time.
Any questions, comments for Mr. McKinney? Thank you. After Mr. Hartsman, we have Colin Tripp.
The Simkins PAC, Robbie Perkins, and city council are trying to rig the mayor election by controlling who they appoint for the open at-large seat. Greensboro City Council double-spending with tax increases.
Mr.
Enriching their contributors and cronies with everyone else's money.
Mr. Hartsman, the purpose of this meeting is to say.
Stop the clock, please.
The purpose of this meeting is to say why we should support you.
I'm in the middle of doing that.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, tell us about you.
I'm gonna say what I came to say. Thank you. You helped Robbie Perkins give millions to his clients, which he profited from. So did you, with votes for parking decks, water, and sewer nonprofits. Robbie was the president of Greensboro Taxpayer-Funded Nonprofit One Step Further when Yvonne Johnson was the Executive Director and a Simkins PAC member. After Johnson passed, her daughter, Gilbert County Clerk of Court Lisa Johnson Tonkins, announced her brother planned to seek his mother's seat and run for council as an incumbent a few months from now. Tony Wilkins, Justin Outling, Hugh Holston, and the Simkins PAC's Goldie Wells and Skip Austin were all appointed to fill vacancies before winning their next elections. I sat through a Simkins PAC shakedown in 2009, and they made it clear I wasn't invited to the party. The PAC's Deana Hayes-Green, Chair of Gilbert County's Board of Education, is also the co-chair of the Civil Rights Museum with Skip Austin. The Simkins PAC endorsed Robbie Perkins in 2013, even though he had just declared bankruptcy and was in the middle of a divorce. Perkins chaired the Civil Rights Museum Simkins Golf Tournament that year before losing to Nancy Vaughn in a landslide. Appointing a connected candidate who runs for election is subversion. Appointing a candidate who commits not to run in July increases the chances of a fair and competitive election, which it appears you have no interest in. You're trying to cheat by interfering with an election and misleading voters. At least appoint someone who won't run in July. That being said, I would like a police escort upon my egress.
Mayor? Any, any questions or comments for Mr. Hartsman?
I, I have a comment.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Just for the benefit of, of all of our citizens here tonight and for those watching, I, I just wanted to explain something that Mr. Hartsman said in his earlier statements when he came to talk to us about our, our two items on the agenda, which were the, were about, about the two bond issues. He referred to a slush fund. Now, his, what he's describing as a slush fund is what we in municipal finance call fund balance. And, you know, we can use an ordinary term that all of us understand and, and just say that that's like a savings account. Now, the amount of, of money that we need to put in our fund balance in Greensboro is based on our expenditures, and it caps the, the local government commission. Let me explain about the local government commission. I've served on the local government commission for five years. I was appointed by Governor Cooper. We approve all municipal financing in the state of North Carolina. That means towns, cities, counties. And when they come before us and ask to borrow money or to issue bonds, we look at all of that very carefully before we approve it, to know that the municipality has the ability financially to fulfill that obligation. The, 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 the amount of fund balance that the local government has asked us to try to reach in North Carolina, or at this point for Greensboro, is twenty-five percent. And we've been adding to our fund balance annually for the last several years in order to bring our fund balance to twenty-five percent. Last year, we were at twenty-three. We will continue to do that. So, I just wanted to explain the use of Mr. Hartsman's slush fund term so that you really understand what we're talking about. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Tripp, followed by Linda Waddell. And our last speaker will be Leonard Williams, if you could all go to the window side of the room. I, I believe, excuse me, before you walk out, this is a sorority, correct? If you, I, I just want to make it clear, you're not walking out because of a certain candidate. You are here to see part of the proceedings and, yes, thank you. Yes.
Good job, Mayor.
Yes. No, that's fine, you can leave. I just wanted, I just wanted everybody to understand. Thank you. Mr. Tripp.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I would like to thank everyone for the opportunity to be here today, as well as express my condolences for the loss of former Mayor Johnson. This has been quite the learning experience, if I do say so. I have moved around quite a lot in my life, but I've always had roots here in Greensboro. I went to school at Gopher College and moved back here about four and a half years ago. There's not a place in the world I would rather call home than Greensboro. And we have so much to love here with our local businesses, our museums, our parks, the Coliseum, and my personal favorite, the Greensboro Science Center. I ask people all the time what their favorite part about living area is, and they not only mention the above, but also the downtown life, the bar and restaurant scene, as well as the people. Despite Greensboro having a population of three hundred thousand, a population that rivals Cincinnati, Orlando, and Newark, there's hardly a place I can go here without running into somebody I know in this very room right now. So, I will say that we are a city, but we are a city with small-town vibes, and I feel like that's part of our charm. There's also some issues that plague our city, and I would love to address and work on them in the utmost capacity as possible, such as our homelessness, opioid crisis, and violent crime. Something that I have been made aware of recently, talking to people, especially in my age bracket, is the desire to move to Charlotte, and they cite reasons just for having a good time and career growth opportunities. And I admittedly don't have all the answers, but I would like to work on our weaknesses in the most effective way possible while preserving and expanding upon our strengths in the foremost way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Mr. Tripp? Thank you. Our next speaker is Linda Waddell, and she did leave a handout for us. Is Leonard Williams in the room? If he could go to the window side. And those, those are all of our speakers.
My name is Linda Waddell. I'm here to present myself for the candidate at-large representative. My commitment to work for the community includes to make sure every resident, citizen of Greensboro, North Carolina, has a voice and is heard and made to feel important. My focus is on public safety improvement. I want to make sure that we use community programs and initiative to foster a secure environment for all the residents, infrastructure enhancement also, to promote and local infrastructure concepts that will improve accessibility and the quality of life for every resident in the community, economic growth and preservation, fostering economic growth while preserving our community unique character is vital for the sustainability of the development in this city. Some of my qualifications and experiences are the fact that I've served on the Wantesville Historical and Beautification Society, the Greensboro Museum promoting the Wantesville Project, I was a member of Concerned Citizens of Northeast Greensboro, serving up on the Goldie Wells, a member of the Greater Greensboro Voters Alliance, Environmental Safety Committee, I was a former board of the Sherri Jackson Foundation that advocates domestic violence against happening, and also a member of Economic Development Committee, advisory board of the Murgert Horton Library, which I helped with the committee to get established. I'm a former member of the Citizen Advisory Committee on the Police Review Board when it was first established. Currently, I am the chairperson of my community where I live at Churchview Farms. My past government services include a former chairperson of the Minimal Housing Standards Commission, 2021 to 22. I'm a former member of the Commission on the Status of Women, 2006 and 2009, and again, a former member of the Police Review Board. I use these memberships and these organizations to make a voice and advocate for everything that I could come and advocate for. Greensboro is my home. I welcome the opportunity to use my skills, my knowledge, my research, my tenacity to help work with the city council. Thank you very much.
And our final speaker is Mr. Leonard Williams. Mr. Williams?
My name is Leonard G. Williams. I live at twelve hundred Neill Town Road, two seven four zero five, here in Greensboro, North Carolina. I was a volunteer on the Greensboro Solid Waste Management Commission for a brief time. Sadly, this commission was a bust with my time wasted from lack of attendance from others. I am here to talk, I am here to talk about, rather, explain three issues I would like to talk about today. These are, these are the three issues of concern that I would like to discuss for your considerations. The first being the landfills throughout the city of Greensboro, and perhaps their future impacts to stunt the growth of future jobs, housing, and industries looking to come here. The second being another area surrounding the reform of the Greensboro, Greensboro, North Carolina Police Department, under the terms of the state legislature, to ensure their safety and knowledge of, for example, the laws where in equitable distribution situations of domestic problems are encountered while on call. Another area also be, also be looked at is the future vehicle traffic downtown, similar to that of other large cities, to maintain pedestrian safety and traffic flow. Are we going to implement the New York taxes or the London taxes? The third is, the third is the age of AI, and how useful of a tool it may be in the, in the right form to educate, educate us, learn from past experiences, or aid in the sort of problems that are tied to other municipalities. We could use AI if we use it diligently and with respect of how it is to be useful. This should only be done with the proper assistance of a highly qualified, trained person in that, in that field, technology only. Finally, I don't have a clue while I'm here, but I'm here, and I'm a team player, and I'm gonna be honest with you. Thank you for considering me for this position, and if I'm chosen, hope to be successful, a successful team player in the future growth of this city of Greensboro, North Carolina. While if not, please choose someone that will make their vote work for all citizens. Thank you for your time. Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. So, those are all of our speakers this evening. As you can see, we've got a long list of very well-qualified people who are interested in serving this capacity, so it is going to take us a little time to digest all the comments that were made tonight. I'm sure we'll go back and review the tape. This is also an opportunity for you to send us any supplemental material you think you might want to add. If you didn't, if you didn't hit a certain point that you wished you had, please feel free to, to send us an email as soon as possible. As you know, we can only select one person, and we had nineteen speakers. I want to encourage you all to look at boards and commissions for future service and for the, for the city academy, to learn more about how the city works. So, if you're not selected, please don't consider that the end of the road. This is just the beginning of a process for you, and we would love for you to have further input in, in our government as we go on. I want to say, you know, we've been asked if we had run conflict checks, had we run criminal records. People who register to run for an office, they have to live in the city, and they have to be twenty-one years old, and that's basically it. The city council does not have the ability, the city attorney does not have the ability to tell somebody that they can't run for a council seat, or that they can't be considered for a council seat. One thing that we do take into consideration is, is voting record. One thing that we do take into consideration is, is voting record. I'll tell you, two of the funniest exchanges I had, which was not with anybody here in the room, was people who weren't even registered to vote but wanted to have the opportunity to serve on city council, which I had a hard time processing that, but they said that they had the right not to vote. Well, we have the right not to appoint you. So, I, I know that we've got a big task ahead of us. Yvonne was a trailblazer, and we miss her dearly. I'm very pleased that so many people came out and recognized the contributions that she has made over the 30 years of her life. She is a very unique individual, and she is going to be missed for a very, very long time. We are tasked with having to move forward, as difficult as that is, because quite frankly, I think all eight of us would prefer not to appoint anybody, but that wouldn't be right for this city, because we need to make sure that you have all the representation that you can possibly have, and that includes having three at-large members. So this is a very difficult task for us, and I want you to know how seriously we take it. We hope that we will hear additional information from you over, over the next day and a half. You know, we probably, if you're going to send us something, do it by Thursday night, so we have the opportunity to review it and maybe ask you any questions if we need to, since we do plan on making a decision on Friday. So, yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming out and the way that you conducted yourself and the way that the, the way that everybody here conducted themselves. I think that is a real tribute to Yvonne and the seriousness of what we are considering. So I don't counsel any comments.
When you, you said we were gonna hear from them, are we hearing not all their-
If they want to send us an email, I said.
Just them, just the applicant.
Just that, yeah, we, we don't need, we don't need references.
Not 10,000 references.
No, we want to hear from you.
Which I'm glad you all have supporters, don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
Because you need that, but I'm just saying, at this time.
Thank you for that. Yeah, we want to hear from you and what you want to bring to the table again, and that's just an opportunity, if you feel like, darn, I wish I had said whatever. This is your opportunity to, to go back and, and say it. Everything is a public record, so chances are it will be reported on in some form or fashion over the next few weeks.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say that I was quite impressed with all of the speakers. I've known a lot of, over the years, but to have them bring forth the things that they've done over time, and some of you have given a lot of service to the city. So we appreciate it, but I was really impressed with the response that they gave. Everybody that came, they got an applause. So everybody was being, was supportive of the next speaker, and that, that's impressive. I thought it was very good.
Mary Kay?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I echo what Dr. Wells just said. I was, at the beginning, I was like, wow, everybody is kind of like working as a team to make sure that everyone felt welcome and everyone had an opportunity to say what they wanted to say, and there was support. You could actually feel the support coming from the audience, so I think everyone is to be commended on that point, and it was very noticeable. I think all of us felt that. It's a, a different atmosphere in the room when you're rooting for someone who may be running against you, you know? It really is. So, that's something that, that I think is, is, that I am very glad to see this evening, and I think each of you are to be commended, along with the fact that everyone really had a, a good presentation. I, I think that is, is commendable. So thank you all very much, each of you.
Madam Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
I was the last person to have gone through the same process back in 2021, so, so to those of you all who are the potential, I understand and I empathize with, with where you've been. And I, and I also want to say that, yes, we, we have had a lot of information in front of us. You might have seen us up here fumbling with books and, and handouts and the like, but I will say, I want to say thank you again, because it's always great to, to, to bring these words off the page and to, and to see and feel and hear your passion in person. We have a tough job, that is, to select the person who's going to sit in that ninth seat up here, but thank you so, so very much for bringing your A-game tonight. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I also want to thank everyone who came tonight. Everyone obviously put their heart and soul into what they believe that they could bring to the city council. As the mayor said earlier tonight, while it's a part-time compensated position, it is a full-time responsibility to talk to the citizens of Greensboro and hear their concerns, and sometimes I don't just talk to the people in my district, I talk to people all across the city. So I can imagine the at-large position really has a huge responsibility with it, and so for you all to step out for that vacancy says a lot for you. So, thank you again for being here. It certainly has made my job hard, I will tell you that, but I believe that we, I will do my due diligence and reflect over what I've heard to make the best decision for the city and that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Zach?
I, I know this has been said a lot, but you come in this chambers, and this is probably of my 12 years or so, the calmest meeting I've ever been a part of, in such a difficult decision with so many emotions and feelings, you know, with the heavy hearts of, you know, Yvonne, her family here, and, and, you know, it is tough to see an empty chair beside you, but the, the poise and the support that this crowd showed every speaker and every speaker showed every speaker, that is not lost. I mean, we don't hear that. Like, the support that y'all gave each other in this community gives me hope in this community, that we're going to get through everything that we're going through right now. And I guess my last thing is, did Mr. Hartsman get home okay?
Yeah. Any other, Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes, I, I would just like to say that, you know, public service and elected office is such a privilege, and I think it's the highest work that you can do. You know, like the, you know, I have represented District Four for 13 years. It's been a huge honor. Like the mayor said, you know, I, I had a, I had a great business career, a corporate business career, but I have said numerous, numerous times that serving as, on the Greensboro City Council has been the best job that I've ever had. I've loved it, every minute, getting up every morning and thinking about the city and, and what, what we want to try to do. So, I thank all of you who have, have chosen to consider this opportunity and appreciate your coming tonight.
I'll wrap it up by saying, there were a number, many, many good candidates here that gave very impressive speeches, and unfortunately, we have one seat to fill. I would like to, to just say that whether you get that seat or not, I hope you'll continue, I hope you'll continue to be involved. If you are considering running this summer and you don't, don't get this seat, don't stop, keep going. We need good candidates, we need future generations, we need people to be involved in our city. As the mayor said, there are boards and commissions, there's city academy, there's so many ways to be involved in our community. And we may be facing some very difficult times and, you know, in the next few years, and we don't know what's ahead, but we're gonna all need to pull together, just like we did tonight, to keep moving forward and keep moving Greensboro forward. So please, if you were a candidate tonight, if you don't get selected, please know that we still need you, we still need your voices, and we still want you involved in Greensboro. Thank you.
Well, do I have a motion to adjourn? Well, nope, 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 nope. A motion to recess. And we will come back Friday at 2:00 in the council chambers. Yep.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Second, third.
Yeah, we, we did it.
Fourth.
I, we, we passed it earlier, didn't we?
Yes, here, yes.